Morning, everybody. I'll call our meeting to order. We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty. Welcome, everybody, to our meeting this morning. We have meeting documents on the end by Commissioner Heiburger. If anybody should need a listening device, contact one of our county staff. And, yeah, if you brought your cellphone, just a reminder to turn it to silent mode. Look for a motion to amend our agenda on item 6C to change it from a veteran's exemption to a paraplegic veteran exemption. So moved?
Second.
Motion and a second to amend the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Okay, I need a motion to approve our amended agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Motion on the meeting minutes from May 25th.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. We also had a joint meeting with the city of Sioux Falls, so look for a motion to approve those meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
I wasn't there.
I wasn't either.
Second.
It was a very short meeting. Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Bills to be paid in the amount of $1,825,000, $934.83.
Second.
Comments? Commissioner Barth?
Mr. Chairman, in looking at the bills, I saw we had $420,000 for jail health care and other stuff for the jail, $80,000 for juvenile detention stuff, alternatives to juvenile detention. We had $65,000 for pictometry, which is for planning and zoning. We had $950,000 in bond redemption and $100,000 in bond interest.
That's where it goes. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Pay the bills. All righty. We have reports. We have one from the Minnehaha County Regional Juvenile Detention Center report for April of 2021. And we'll move into personnel actions and look for a motion to approve routine personnel actions.
Approve routine action.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Carries. Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning, Carrie Dever from Human Resources. I have a bit of a longer list for you. The first is to consider a motion or to recognize significant employee anniversaries for June. Our list is short, but adds up to several years of service. We have Dane Hackett and Bowen Chang, who are COs in the Sheriff's Office Jail, both celebrating five years of service. Joseph Flynn in the State's Attorney's Office, celebrating 10. Jasmine Thalen in the jail, celebrating 10. Tara Palmeado in the State's Attorney's Office, celebrating 15. And Kevin Nelson in IT, also celebrating 15. So our gratitude to all those individuals for their many years of service.
You bet.
The next item is a request to record volunteers in the county department for May 2021. Again, we're seeing some increases in numbers as the months go by. We're up to 130 volunteers in over eight departments at the county. I think I say this every month, but we really can't do it without all their support. The next item is a special request to approve the hire of Susan Beaman, Finance and Budget Officer for the Auditor's Office at a salary of $3,588 biweekly. As you know, we use a hiring range of steps one through four. And every now and then requests for outside that range are made if an individual has particularly deep experience. In this case, Susan Beaman has over 20 years of experience in her field. She's got a CPA and she has 15 years as a Director of Accounting, so we're requesting your approval on that salary.
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Pose same sign. Carries.
All right. The next is a request to approve a reclassification of Assistant Commission Administrative Officer in the Commission Office from a pay grade 21 to a 22. This has to do with the growth and the depth of responsibilities for the position. As you all know, this position's responsible for anything from project management to the Public Information Officer for the county, support on policies, legislative actions, periodically serving as a lobbyist. And given all those duties, it's more consistent with a pay grade 22. We're requesting your approval for support of that today.
I'd make a motion to approve that.
I'll second. Let's just comment.
Please.
I just would like to point out that this is a position that has evolved over time, that we've had an opportunity to see how much need we have for this position and the increased responsibilities that have been delegated to it. And that it makes a lot more sense to upgrade a position than it does to add a position, which would be the other option that we'd have to look at. And so I'm fully in support of this.
Other comments? All righty, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That carries.
The next request is to approve a reclassification of the Commission Assistant in the Commission Office from a pay grade 12 to a pay grade 14. The reason for this request is that the duties of this position have become more consistent with other positions at a 14 as well. For example, the position involves responsibilities for drafting resolutions and ordinances, assisting with contract management, technical support, and other special projects for the Commission. So we're requesting your approval on that reclassification.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Comments? Commissioner Bender?
I just restate my previous comment.
Will you yield back the rest of your time?
Yes, I will.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Okay.
Request is to approve a reclassification of the Administrative Assistant in the Public Defender's Office from a pay grade 12 to an Office Manager at a pay grade 16. You might recall that last week we talked about the Office Manager in the State's Attorney's Office, which has a very similar role in the PDO. This individual's fully responsible for supervising six individuals, including participating in hiring decisions and performing the performance evaluations. So we're requesting the reclassification.
Move for approval?
Second.
A second. I guess my comment on this, just as in our administrative office, the county's grown. The number of people that work in those offices, this individual supervises six legal office assistants, professionals just by their work and education. So I think this is definitely needed because this individual has been working in this position, probably undercompensated for some time.
I would just point out that it's also consistent with the action that we took with the State's Attorney's Office in a similar, very similar position just in the last couple of weeks.
Yes. All right. Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. All right, we have some abatements. First one is a recommendation for denial. Chris, why are we denying, recommending denial on this?
Chris Lilla, Equalization Office. Yeah, the first one, parcel number 36621, property tax 2020 in the amount of $2,251.60 was requested for us. However, the property owner did not own the home on November 1st. And as we have made you aware, I can't deny anybody from requesting an abatement. If they want it, I have to allow them to apply, and then I have to investigate it and make my recommendation to you. So this one here, based on not owning the property as of November 1st, it's a moot point. So, but we have to move it forward as a recommended for denial.
Questions for Chris? Motions?
Motion to approve denial.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion to approve denial. Signs a yes means no. Yeah, okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That one's approved for denial. But then we have some recommended for approval.
Item B, parcel 64142, City of Sioux Falls, 2020 property tax in the amount of $829.80.
Oops. I think we need, I think we need a roll call vote.
Thank you. And it says that right here. So going back to 6A, roll call vote, please.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Carsky?
Aye. Carries. Okay.
Item B, parcel 64142, City of Sioux Falls, 2020 property tax in the amount of $829.80. City of Sioux Falls purchased property. And again, once an exempt entity acquires, then we work on the abatement when the taxes come due. So we're recommending approval.
Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Roll call.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Carsky?
Aye. That one carries.
Item C, parcel 89799, 2020 property tax in the amount of $3,170.58. This is for a paraplegic reduction, and we're recommending approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call the roll.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Aye.
Item D, parcel 61507 for Neil Selkin, 2020 property tax in the amount of $172.77. This is for a barn that had burned down. We verified with the insurance data of the date of that incident, and we're recommending approval on the loss of value or taxable value on that property, so.
Motion to approve. Second. Call the roll.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Carsky?
Aye.
Carries.
Item E is parcel 80851, Northwest District of Wesleyan Church, 2020 property tax in the amount of $1,491.63. This is a property that the church had applied for another one, and then they were combining the parcels to make them tax exempt, and we're recommending approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Barth? Carsky?
Aye.
Item F is parcel 40085, Sioux Falls School District, 2020 property tax in the amount of $1,311.85. Again, Sioux Falls School District purchased property, and as an exempt entity, we're recommending approval.
Motion to approve.
Second. Roll call.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Barth? Bender?
Aye.
Carsky?
Aye.
Item G, parcel 76322, Sioux Falls School District, 2020 property tax in the amount of $2,105.36. Same as before.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender? Aye. Benega?
Aye.
Carsky?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Chris. All right. Notice and requests. We have, am I supposed to read these?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So South Dakota Department of Health, Notice of Disinterment Permit for the Remains of Barbara Jensen. It's filed. And then I'm looking for an authorization to publish the notice of hearing on June 15th, 2021, to consider a special on-sale wine retailer's license application submitted by the Al Riyad Shrine. Do we have any comments on this, Ben? It's pretty self-explanatory?
Yeah.
Okay.
No objections from the State's Attorney's Office, Wine or Insurance.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. No planning and zoning notices. We have a couple petitions for compromise of lien. Good morning, Melinda. We have DPNO 21256, the amount of $18,515.20.
Good morning, Commissioners. On this DPNO, the petitioner is requesting a compromise of lien with no payment. The petitioner is asking for two types of compromise. One is to be released from the responsibility of the joint lien, leaving the balance in the name of her ex-husband. And the second is to release the real property located at 924 West 12th Street from the lien. The legal description is the south 94 feet of Lot 5, and the south 94 feet of Lot 6 and Block 2 of Folsom's addition to the city of Sioux Falls, Minnehaha County, South Dakota, according to the recorded plat thereof. The couple married on May 1977 and divorced August 1995. The divorce stipulation and agreement dated June 1995 indicates that the real property listed above was awarded to the petitioner, the wife, and the husband was to quitclaim his interest in the residence, and that was enclosed in the packet. She sold the property August of 2020 by quitclaim and moved into an apartment, but would like to clear the title for the current owner of record.
All righty. Questions by the Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I'm in sympathy for doing this. At the same time, I sort of feel that these quitclaim deals lead me to suspect other arrangements being made on the side. And, but I do support this, and I'll make a motion to approve.
Second with a comment, just that they were divorced in 1995, and the ex-spouses' claims don't start, or use of our services don't start until 2003. So it was years after the divorce before we even started using our services. So I support the motion to, to compromise.
Other comments?
I would just say, obviously, the balance was zero at the time of the transaction, so I don't see any issue with it.
All righty.
Mr. Chairman, Gerald, you're absolutely right. At the same time, our liens don't necessarily post immediately. And I guess additionally, you know, I've seen others where the quitclaim process seemed to be, I just worry about it.
And end around on the process. I agree with you, Commissioner, but I don't suspect that in this case either, so. All righty. Do we need a roll call vote on this?
I don't think so.
Yes, I'm getting a head nod from my legal counsel, so I'm gonna go with a roll call vote.
We have Barth and Heiburger for the second.
Yep.
Okay. Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Carsky?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The second compromise of lien is DPNO 66799 in the amount of $6,976.72 with payment of $3,488.36, which is 50% of the lien balance. The petitioner and his wife are trying to sell their current home in order to be able to purchase a larger home for them and their four children. The title company has informed them that the lien will need to be resolved before they can move forward with a closing date of June 11, 2021, on the sale of the home at 205 Bonnie Circle. The couple's 2020 income tax shows combined wages of $48,898 and a refund of $8,192. Their two most recent paychecks show a combined monthly amount of $5,184. The assets listed total $218,550, and liabilities total $149,473. He explains in his narrative that they recently experienced some unexpected medical expenses and ask for your support in compromising the lien. He is here if you have any questions.
Okay. First, I'll turn this over to the Commission. Comments by the Commissioners? Commissioner Heiburger.
Melinda, were some of the tax returns that are listed on here, were they some of the stimulus money that's been given this last year?
No, I don't believe so. They were tax credits.
Okay.
For the children.
And I know the petitioner is here. I don't know if you would like to make any comments. You don't have to give your name. If you'd like to stand where you are, if you have any additional comments. If you don't, that's fine, too.
I would like to thank the Commission for your time today and in my case. Also, I would like to formally apologize to the county for my responsiveness and not taking care of it earlier. This is not a trait that I am very proud of, so I am here to apologize and thank you.
All righty, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate his statement there. And I would note that none of these things happened in the last 10 years. But they were obviously expenses for public defender, public advocate, which means it wasn't for rent or, you know, prescription drugs. And in general, I feel a little less sympathetic towards those kinds of liens than I do for the other types. For, for public defense on a criminal charge, it's harder to forgive it than it is for, you know, medical costs for your child or something. But I do support this, and I will make a motion to approve.
I have a motion. Looking for a second.
A second.
Motion and a second. Additional comments? My only comment would be that historically, we do forgive it 50% from my recollection, so. Commissioner Heiburger?
Just that this young man is trying, or younger than me, sorry. Young man is making an effort to put his family in a home and become a responsible citizen in our community. Both him and his wife work full-time, and they have four children. So I think that financially, this makes sense for them. We want to not burden them and end up in other services that the county provides, so I would support it, too.
All righty, call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Carsky?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Melinda will work with you. All right, we are now at the point of our meeting where we take public comment. If anybody from the public is here, would like to take a few minutes to address the Commission, we welcome you.
Good morning.
If you could start with your name and address, that would be great.
My name is Sarah Kube. My address is 4509 South Tennis Lane, Number 3, here in Sioux Falls. I was here, oh, probably three weeks ago and was listening to your health commissioner and about their intakes and things like that. And I'm wondering if this committee has ever asked the question on how many of their intakes are pain patients, being labeled as crazy. And I think that needs to be addressed because pain has been mismanaged in this, in this state and particularly this city, especially for anyone who's utilized cannabis or what I consider herbal remedies to manage symptoms that they're having in their lives. And so I saw him, and I saw what he said and what he came up and did, and I just went, I'm curious, has this committee ever asked that question? Has there ever been a study to see what the intakes are here at the hospitals here in Sioux Falls? And how many of them are being sent to behavioral health when they're complaining that they have pain? Because I know I had an instance happen here a couple of years ago to where it was a pain issue and the failure of the medical community to manage that pain in what I consider a reasonable manner. And ended up in a 72-hour hold, which got dropped to a 24-hour hold, which got dropped to like 12. Okay, but still, I sat there and I went, what am I doing in here compared to just managing the pain of the symptoms that I have proof of from x-rays and labs and things like that? So I thank you guys for all of your hard work, and I'm asking you to ask this tough question because I think it's going to determine how much it's going to cost the county to take care of these patients. And I think it's a lot of wasted resources, shuffling people to places where they don't need to be, and then them not getting the help into the areas that they should have been put into in the first place. So thank you very much for your time, guys.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All righty. We will move on. Good questions. Okay, so we have a briefing on tax increment financing district number 24 within the Sioux Falls. And this is for Sioux Steel, and we got Dustin and Company. Welcome, gentlemen.
Good morning, Commissioner Dustin Powers with the Sioux Falls Planning and Development Services Department. Today, we're here to revisit a development and tax increment district for the Sioux, the Steel District within downtown Sioux Falls. If you recall, from January of 2020, we were here and presented this project to you. And then in February of 2020, the City Council voted to approve the TIF request for CR Lloyd Associates for TIF 22 to the city of Sioux Falls for the redevelopment of the former Sioux Steel site downtown. The TIF was approved for roughly $21.5 million plus the cost of financing for the construction of a 900-plus stall parking ramp to support the density of the proposed project. As we all know, shortly after February of 2020, we all kind of entered into some unknown times with the COVID-19 pandemic, which ultimately did delay the project. Now again, the project is gearing up, and CR Lloyd Associates has requested to reset the timeline for the tax increment district. To actually reset the timeline for the district, you have to create a new district. So what we are proposing on doing is dissolving the previous TIF 22 district and creating a new TIF 24 district to the city of Sioux Falls to reset that timeline. All other elements and the actual TIF request are the exact same that you heard last spring. But we did want to come in front of you here today to present that information. So as is required, we are required to notify all the taxing entities. We did send notice to all of those on May 13th. And we are here today to kind of present you the briefing, as we have done in recent years, to give you an update on the project and the request that's coming in front of the city. We are hosting a public hearing on this for the Planning Commission on June 2nd, which is tomorrow. And then following that, at subsequent meetings, we'll be going in front of the City Council in June and July for their consideration of the request to restart the timeline with a new TIF district. So I'll turn it over to Luke Jesson with Lloyd Companies. He'll walk you through, again, those project details you've heard before. And if there's any questions on the project or the request, I'll be here after that.
Thank you, Dustin, and welcome, Luke.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Luke Jesson with Lloyd Companies. I've got a presentation queued up, I believe. There we go. Thank you. And you can just go ahead to the next slide. So this is the site plan that we brought forward last year. And really, we, like Dustin said, we haven't made any changes. So overall, the project stayed the same as far as the unit mix densities, things like that. The one area that we have changed on this site plan, and it hasn't actually changed any footprints, is the residential wrap building that surrounds the parking ramp there has increased to six stories instead of five, and we've added a level of residential condos based on market demand and hearing that more owner occupied living in downtown is being demanded. We've decided to add that to our project. Moving to the next slide. This is a view of the project, basically if you were hovering above the falls, looking back towards the project. On the left side of the screen, that's a nine-story office tower with roughly about 175,000 square feet of office space. And then on the right side, we have our hotel and convention center. There's about 216 guest rooms, and it's a Canopy by Hilton Hotel. The next slide. This just shows the walkability and the activity that we hope to see on this site and the way we've programmed the site. We've created lots of public spaces for people to flow in and out of the development. And actually, last week, on the building to the left, we were able to share that a restaurant operator based in the Twin Cities has actually committed to bring three restaurants to the site in that location. The next slide, this is as if you were kind of standing above the berm on the backside of the levee. And this looks down what will be Fourth Street. And it shows the Skywalk connectivity, basically from the parking ramp and residential on the right side over into the office building, and then that continues into the hotel as well. Just kind of talking through those a little bit deeper. North of Fourth Street, that hotel and convention center, this will actually be the second phase of construction that we hope to start probably late fall. And then if you scroll to the next slide, the area south of Fourth Street, we actually hope to begin this portion of the project later this summer. So that'll be the parking ramp and then the residential pieces. As far as the financial details goes, that's how kind of each phase of the project breaks down. In total, we'll have an over $200 million investment right along the Big Sioux River. And then as far as the tax increment goes, in 2021, we're at $71,121 in taxes. And then we're projecting that by 2042, that tax payment will be over $2.8 million. And then lastly, the area that we're applying the TIF to is the parking ramp. And our position on this is we will operate it the same way as the city ramp. So there will be leased parking and hourly parking, but consistent with the way the city operates that as far as right now being free on the nights and weekends. But then if that were to change, we just look for the opportunity to match the city's operations. And with that, I will answer any questions that you guys have.
Questions for Luke. Commissioner Benega?
Luke, just a quick question. Obviously, we were supportive of the project last year, and I'm sure we'll continue that. But how's the value of the project changed, and has it affected the tax request, if you will, for the TIF district?
Yep. So we haven't changed the request. We've kept that the same. Really, if we were able to, we would just ask to reset the timeline. The value of the project, we've seen great upticks in residential. Obviously, building costs have gone up quite significantly. But one of the changes we've made is kind of switching the building structures to some materials that we can better control. So minimizing the use of wood in favor of steel and concrete that haven't seen quite the swings that lumber has. And then obviously, the hotel industry took a big hit. The valuation of that has been challenging, but we're working through some creative financing. The valuation of that has been challenging, but we're working through some creative financing methods to try to make sure that we can get that financed and moving forward. Any other questions?
Commissioner Barth.
I really appreciate this project. It's, I'm glad that it's going to be located there, but two million dollars in 2042 is not the same as two million dollars today. And, you know, I was looking at coincidentally what a million dollars in nineteen-twenty-one would be compared to a million dollars in 2021, and it would be fourteen million dollars. So is that set that the revenue, tax revenue in 2042 would be two million dollars, or if, might it be twelve million dollars? I mean, I'm just asking.
Yeah, it could be. We're just making projections based on the current value that we're projecting of the buildings and what the mill levy is today, and obviously, that could change the, in twenty years, the value as far as the way that they're capitalized could change. So that's the best guess that we can make as of today, but like you said, depending on inflation, all kinds of different factors could impact what that final number is in 2042.
Thank you. All righty. And this is just a briefing. No commission action is required, so we appreciate your time today, and it's always good to know what's happening, so when we see it downtown, we can talk about it. Commissioner Bender.
And just for the viewing public, we don't really have an opportunity to take action on this. This is just a briefing, but this is a decision that ultimately only the city council has the power to make.
This is correct.
Awesome. Well, thank you guys for the opportunity to represent this project. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'll take the corner apartment.
Dustin, you're back up. We have a briefing on tax increment financing district number twenty-five within Sioux Falls, Sharapa Two Place and Rail Yard Development. Good morning again.
Yes, good morning, Commissioner. Today, I'm here with Jeff Scherzlich with Pender Associates to share another exciting project that they are bringing forward to downtown Sioux Falls. Before I turn it over to Jeff, I just wanted to hit on a quick, a couple of the quick points that we have. This project is requesting, again, tax increment financing of twenty-five million, a little over twenty-five million dollars, plus the cost of financing to directly assist in the funding of the construction of parking, which will be both structured and surface, as well as roads and utilities to support the density and connectivity of the project in Sharapa Place. As we have with the previous one, we've notified all the taxing entities. The notice for this was mailed out on May fourteenth. We have scheduled a public hearing on the same date as the previous TIF, which is June second, at the planning commission meeting, and we are here today to present, again, this project for you. Again, to Commissioner Bender's point, yeah, there is not a voting item, but the reason we do come in front of you and give this information to you upfront is so that you have the opportunity to see the information and share your thoughts with the city council as they are the ones that do make that ultimate decision at the end of this. So I will turn it over to Jeff. He'll go through the project, and we'll, again, I'll be here for any questions that you may have regarding the TIF request or the project.
Thanks, Dustin. Good morning, folks.
Morning.
Morning, Jeff.
Jeff Scherzlich with Pender Properties. Appreciate your time this morning. Let's go to the next slide. Boom! Who can forget, over sixteen years ago, when the zip tower came down and the beginning of kind of the redevelopment of East Bank downtown? That was a successful public-private partnership. We did involve the city and a TIF on that project, and it's been successful. It was a part of many firsts. It was the first River Greenway development out in front of Sharapa there. It was a successful TIF. It was paid for in thirteen years, so it was very successful for both the city and the project. It was the first LEED Gold Certified Project in South Dakota, and it was really the first of taking and putting its front door to the river. So Sharapa, as you all know, now is thirteen years down the road. It has been a successful project, and now we're really ready for phase two. Next slide, please. The city, you know, was looking to relocate the rail yard, switch yard for years. Actually, the city had an earmark to remove the switch yard prior to me even buying the land in two thousand and four. However, it took the city about ten years negotiating with the railroad to accomplish this, and part of that then that followed after they finally got the deal done with the railroad was a study on what they wanted to occur on this land and this really critical land, ten acres downtown. With that, they wanted a live, work, and play scenario. They want a density. They want a connectivity and walkability. Basically, if you take a look at the plan that we've put forward to everybody to take a look at, plus the rail yard flats project, which is just about complete and will be occupied here July one, it really has taken all of the issues that the community wanted. So we are nothing more than a conduit to create a project that really was for the community when it comes down, down to it. Next. Here's a vision of what is coming soon. You know, we think it's a dynamic vision. You're only seeing part of it because we're taking this shot from the riverfront. So you see Sharapa here. There's an interconnect between the two buildings that we are labeling a community facility when it comes down to it. That's over, that's a five-thousand-square-foot, actually, conference center to be shared by the two facilities, you know, the two businesses there, but on the weekends and during the weekdays at night, this could be used as a downtown, you know, event center, if you want to call it. So this could hold somewhere like a three-hundred-and-fifty-person wedding in that interconnect overall. You know, we're obviously tying everything in front of the River Greenway, tying into the amphitheater, you know, basically, it's pulling all of this together. What you can't see in this picture is there's a Sharapa two, as you see, a Sharapa three, and a Sharapa four that all goes together to be built in one phase to make this project come alive on behalf of the community. If we take a look at the next slide, this is the project. You know, what you see is what you're going to get. You can see where it's located. A lot of this is on the old zip site, and then to make it become real, we need to take, we needed to work with the city and negotiate buying part of the rail yard relocation. With this, we have three buildings, anywhere from seven to nine stories high. The total project is a hundred and sixty-million dollars. There's a hundred and thirty thousand square foot of office, forty-five thousand square foot of retail, a hundred and fifty apartments, and ten to twelve luxury condos on top of the Sharapa two. Also, what basically the TIF is being asked for primarily is the parking. So as the community wants density, the only way we can put this much density on that site is to create two very large parking ramps. So there's a parking ramp in building three, and there's a parking ramp in building four that entails about seven hundred parking spots. At the same time, when you aggregate the entire parking for the site, there's over nine hundred spots when it comes down to it. As we indicated, we think that we're tying into a lot of the community's needs, the walkability, the activity tying into the River Greenway, the interconnect, all of those type of things, the courtyard, all of the things that were being requested in the community study. Next. A little bit of a financial overview. We're making estimates. We feel pretty good with these. They keep rising every week, every month. To be honest, I've just had to add and add dollars to make this project work. It's a little bit daunting, however, again, we're not using lumber on a project like this because it's really mainly concrete and steel because of the nature of the construction and the quality that we're putting into it. You see where it reaches a hundred and sixty-million-plus dollars. Right now, the tax on the land that is being, you know, that is vacant or has our parking, our surface parking generates fifty thousand dollars in real estate tax, using the increment, using the value of these buildings, working with the county to assess these properties. We estimate by 2040, the tax on these properties will be two-point-six-five million dollars a year. At the same time, this project on its own will generate city and state sales tax and excess taxes, excise tax in excess of six-point-seven million dollars. Next. Estimated eligible TIF costs, there's fifty-seven-point-six million dollars of what is eligible TIF costs. The main ones that you'll take a look at that we'll be using the requested TIF for is the two very large parking ramps. As you know, this site is very difficult and very challenging to deal with. Any of you that watched the rail yard flats project, I said I felt like Fred Flintstone because there were so many stones and rocks and et cetera that we had to deal with, and you can see that our total TIF request of the fifty-seven million dollars that are eligible is twenty-five million plus. That has been basically pre-negotiated with the city. That's part of why we're also looking at doing all of the projects at one time. In order to generate the TIF to pay for that, we need to create all of the value so that the taxation begins right away when it comes down to it. With that, folks, you know, you can see the milestone right now. Again, I didn't take the time today because I know my time was short, but we did announce a large fifty thousand square foot, high-end fintech company that is coming downtown and being our key tenant. You know, it's exciting because they're bringing down those jobs downtown. They're going to be adding seventy-five to a hundred more jobs over the number of years. These are really nice, high-paying jobs. We also have another, you know, fifty thousand or so square foot of people that we hope to announce soon. You can see that we're going to start this fall. Building two will be completed in the summer of 2023 to hit the timeline for our tenants. Building three will start, you know, a little bit later because that's where we're starting our, you know, kind of where we'll be using as a base to kind of deploy our building two and four. Basically, completed in 2023 is building four, the same time. Building twenty, building three will end up being done in the spring of 2024, but again, it's all at one time. It's just a little bit of the staging that we had to do to accomplish all this. So basically, we're ready to roll. We're ready to get started. We are dealing with the construction cost increases, but we think we can overcome those. We've got a partnership with Journey Construction, ISG, the Architect Engineers, you know, everything's a go at this point. We have requested our TIF, which is necessary to make this happen. Unfortunately, it's the density that requires that, folks. You know what parking ramps cost, and that's really what we're asking for today. We appreciate your interest. I'll answer any questions at this time.
All righty. Thank you very much, Jeff. Questions from the commission? For Jeff or Dustin? Commissioner Barth.
I think there are more Jeffs in the room than normal. But let me say, we are lucky in Sioux Falls to have you as a developer. You know, your visionary look at this area is greatly appreciated, and, well, on the one hand, I'd like you to build a parking ramp for the county admin building. Let me also say, we're lucky to have you speaking to us this way because it's not been boring. You've got, your exuberance is infectious.
We appreciate it, Jeff. And again, this project is meant for a community project. You know, we've had this vision, and on behalf of the community, we bought the zip land seventeen years ago. We think we can pull this off. We have the backing. We have the tenants at this point. You know, again, it takes this partnership. I believe in public-private partnerships. It works, folks. Sharapa one was a great start. It helped generate, I think, a lot of, about a hundred million dollars plus in construction on the East Bank and the remodeling of Raven Industries. We think this is just the next phase. And, you know, I hope to get this done while I'm still living because time is ticking, and so we're excited to get started and make this become a reality because this town, as I call it, the little town that could, deserves this, and we're going to show the big towns that we can do just as well, if not better. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jeff. I have a question for Dustin, if you don't mind. Dustin, most TIFs are twenty years, is that correct?
Yeah, state law limits them to twenty years.
And how soon are most of them paid off?
It all depends on the project. You know, I would say historically, a majority of ours have paid off before the twenty-year timeframe. With this one and the previous one projected, we are actually looking at, you know, almost a full year or four, twenty years. But you have to think about that is, you know, it takes three years for these projects to get built before they even start generating taxes. So you already narrowed your window from twenty to seventeen years to pay off these types of improvements. And to Commissioner Barth's point earlier about, is that two-point-eight-million number in 2042 the real number? You know, we're basing it off of the valuation projection we have today, the mill levy we have today. We know, we do a very conservative projection of increase in terms of valuation through our projections, but, you know, those things will change over time. Valuations will go up, possibly, you know, the collection of the taxes will go up over that timeframe. So that's, historically, that will start to, you know, shorten that time period, but we do typically approve these for the full twenty years because it is a little unknown once you get a few years out. But historically, yes, ours do get paid off fairly quickly.
Okay, thank you. Other questions or comments? To quote Commissioner Barth, thank you for the exuberance. You add some life to the meeting. I appreciate that. So good luck with this, and exciting to see, and it's going to start this year and be done in three years. I hope to see it all, too.
Make sure you get out when we get opened up with rail yard flats. I think you'll find that to be a unique project as well. Again, it was kind of the start of the redevelopment of the rail yard, switch yard, and I think this will really take us to the next level. And again, we appreciate your support. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
All righty, moving on. Nope. This is just a hearing, and the city council will be the one that would take any comments on it because for them, it's a public hearing, so for us, it's just a briefing. So the city council would be the one that would take comments on it. All right, look for a motion to approve or deny a consume and blend alcohol beverage license application for Brian DeYoung for an event on June twelfth, 2021, a wedding, I'm assuming, so.
Motion to approve?
Aye.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Look for a bid award to Summit Food Service LLC for institutional food services and technology service. Warden Mattson.
He is here. He was in the other room. Okay.
He's coming, okay. This is obviously for the jail.
Good morning.
Warden, Warden.
Warden Mike Mattson, Warden of the Minnehaw County Jail. I'm here this morning to get authorization to award our food service contract to Summit. We reviewed the two proposals that we received, and the review committee is recommending that we go with Summit. With me is Marlon Shanahad Jr., if you have any questions for him. He made himself available to come today.
Mr. Chairman, I just would like to say it's a unique moment to have Marlon in the room here because this whole business kind of got started in this room when the commission that preceded my being elected chose this family at that time, this family, to take over feeding our inmates. And at the time, Carol Tweet will tell you that we didn't know for sure if they could do it, but there they were, the whole family in the front row of this room, ready to take on the task, and we rolled the dice, we picked them, and Marlon, you could tell us today about the prosperity of your business.
Well, thank you, and thank you for allowing me to be here and our family to provide service for the past twenty-four years to Minnehaw County. This is where we started. We grew up here in South Dakota, and we asked Minnehaw County for an opportunity to do your business. Again, that opportunity took us through twenty-four years. Today, we serve over a million meals a day across the United States, over six hundred jails and prisons. And so through our affiliate, we merged with a French company in 2017, but it all started here, and hard work and support by the county and the state eventually through Bill Janklow's administration to do the prison system and then across the country. So I wanted to thank you for the past, to hope to earn your trust going forward, and as I was visiting with Warden Mattson, the same protocol applies. If you need anything, you call me directly, and we'll take care of it. And same way for the county and Sheriff Milstead. Sheriff Milstead was there the first day we gave the opportunity. So we're proud to be here, we're proud of the support, and we thank you for the opportunity and hope to earn your trust and keep serving the taxpayers, Minnehaw County.
Great story.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. So looking for a motion.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Carries, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
All right, looking for a motion to authorize the chair to sign the joint funding agreement between Minnehaw County, the City of Brandon, and the City of Sioux Falls for the 2021 raise grant application. Submit, oh, is Jacob here? Keep them moving. Morning, Jacob.
Jacob. Good morning. Sorry. Yeah, so last week, we passed an agreement, signed an agreement with the HDR to put this raise grant application together. And today, this would be the car share for the project between the three jurisdictions based on their total lengths within the job.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Jacob.
Let's get that job done before I leave.
Look for a motion to declare various items from the Minnehaw County Extension Building as surplus for donation to the Habitat for Humanity Restore. The extension building is one directly to the east of this building. Good morning again.
Good morning, Melinda Storley, Commission Office. We're requesting that you consider a motion to declare these items from the extension building as surplus and approve to donation to the Habitat for Humanity. The Facilities Department has started their pre-demolition process of clearing out any items within the building that don't have any use to Minnehaw County. And so Minnehaw reached out to the Habitat for Humanity Restore to see if they could use any of the items and would benefit their resale. And they agreed that they would be interested in some of the things, but not everything. Anyway, so some of the, some of the items that we are requesting to be surplus are the fixed roll-up doors. There's three of them. One is on the main floor, one in the basement, and one on the second floor to pull down on the kitchen areas. Three appliances, a glass top range and a stove, a whirlpool range, electric range stove, and then a Kenmore dishwasher. And then we have several cases of copy paper that were originally purchased many years ago. The commission office did make an attempt to distribute that to as many offices as possible within the county. And we were able to eliminate at least fifty-two cases of paper. The lack of interest is because they're larger sizes and multiple pastel colors that just aren't used in office spaces. So that's pretty much the request.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
We're looking at trying to get rid of thirty-nine cases of paper. Why are we buying so much paper twenty years ago or whenever it was? It just, I hope nobody's hoarding the stuff today.
I think it was budget stuff gone awry when somebody had a paper fetish.
It's one I'm unfamiliar with.
All right, carrying on. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion approved. Thank you very much, Melinda.
Do we have to have roll call on that since we're declaring surplus?
Has to be unanimous.
All vote, okay, call the roll.
Vanega.
Aye.
Hiberger.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Vander?
Aye.
Par.
Aye.
Thank you again.
Thanks again.
I just would point out to the public that we're not allowed to donate without a unanimous vote on behalf of the commission. And that's why we had to.
Thank you for that point of order. All right, authorize the chair to sign amendment number one for the guaranteed maximum price for the construction manager at risk for the extension building renovation. Same building, different subject.
That's true. Carol Muller, Commission Office. I would say to Commissioner Barth's comment that we also need to have all five commissioners present whenever you do a donation of any kind, along with being that, along with being unanimous. Yes, before you today is amendment number one for two different contracts. You'll be, you're doing two different amendment number ones. So amendment number one is for the CMAR contract, construction manager at risk contract for the extension building renovation. And that one is for a GMP guaranteed maximum price of two million, three hundred and sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one dollars. So you had the contract a few weeks ago with Henry Carlson for the CMAR contract. Now that we know enough details to come in, we can actually put a price point on doing that. The other thing, and I will mention too, the extension building is historical. We also know that building's not going anywhere. So we are doing some things like windows and roof and that kind of stuff that, just not an inside remodel to it. There's a little bit more that goes into a building that we know will be on campus and won't be going away at all. The other one is the new highway facility.
Can we do that one separate? I think we have to have two separate actions.
Oh, sorry, thank you very much.
Yep, yep. So going back to the extension building, questions on that? You had mentioned the historical nature. Did we resolve the issue with the roof, roofing materials? Or is that still?
At this point, the Historical Board and the State Historical Board are still continuing to recommend the slate.
One thing about that, if I might, is that the issue is that the slate these days is supposed to be of a lesser quality than the slate of bygone eras. And so after a few years, it's expected it might discolor and become, you know, obnoxious looking, whereas the synthetic material would not. That said, we re-slated the roof of the museum and the Pettigrew House. And how long ago was that?
Pettigrew was just accomplished the last couple of years. And the museum was done in 2000. A slate roof is slated, is slated to last for a hundred years, which is really appealing because we recognize the cost of everything that goes into it. But as Commissioner Barth was saying, yes. The concern is that they've seen some examples of around town of slate roofs that have been put on that are less than ten years old and you're starting to see discoloration in them.
Alrighty, so we have a motion and a second for amendment one. I don't need a roll call vote. Voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. And then moving on to the highway facility.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, before you today is the CMAR amendment number one. Again, three weeks ago, I believe it was, you had a contract that you signed with Henry Carlson, who will be the construction manager at risk on the highway facility that's being built. And before you today, they have a GMP cost that goes into it. And that is a cost of eleven million, five hundred and forty-three thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Carol.
Thank you. Who needs a motion and a second on the extension building remodel?
Ian, Cindy, and me.
I don't think we did it.
I don't think we did it.
Okay, well, I'll retroactively make a motion. That happened five minutes ago.
And I'll retroactively second number sixteen.
So we have a motion and a second on item number sixteen from Commissioner Barth and a second by Commissioner Hiberger. And all those, everybody voted in favor, but we can do it again. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Cleaned up, thank you. All right, liaison reports. Commissioner Hiberger.
Yesterday was Memorial Day, and I attended the South Dakota Veterans Cemetery, our first South Dakota Veterans Cemetery in the state of South Dakota, is now in Minnehaw County. And they had the ribbon cutting yesterday and a memorial service. The place is beautiful. If you have not seen it, it's open. You can drive out there and drive around it. I think they're going to be ready to bury people, veterans, soon. As in, like, I think you can start making appointments. And I think they actually have had some requests. It was very nice, well-attended. The weather was beautiful. It was a good day to be out there. So if you haven't seen it, it's north of Sioux Falls, just off of 229. If you go underneath the Interstate ninety bridge and just keep going, and then it's a little bit east, about a mile down the road. So very nice.
Thank you, Commissioner. I was out there a little earlier than the event, but we did walk around. It is a beautiful facility. Any other liaison reports? Commissioner Bender.
I'd just like to make her, just remind everybody that there's an open house today out in Crooks at the Community Center to review the Highway one thirty corridor study. A lot of great information. The commissioners have had an opportunity to listen to that, but it's a great opportunity for the public to hear about some significant changes Foundation Park is going to bring to that area.
Starts at five thirty.
Yes, thank you.
At five thirty up at the Crooks Community Center, yes. And I just want to emphasize that what this is, our highway department is continuously looking at where are the needs for construction, highway construction within the county. And they look at numerous places. And for example, the Maple Park Road, Six Mile Road, and this county road that runs from the interstate into Crooks. We don't build a road so we can have more traffic. We look at what the traffic's going to be and if we're going to need to build a road. So some people have been putting the cart before the horse. And I just wanted to clear that up, that the highway department is just responding to the need that will exist. We're not building it so we can create traffic. So emphasize that. But if you want to hear more about it, we, I personally have heard it three times as I know maybe one or two other commissioners have in the last month or so. So it is an interesting, what's going to be happening out there? And they're looking for input and comments and, yeah. Big, big deal, okay? Any other liaison reports?
God bless America. It was a great day yesterday.
There you go. I have one liaison report. I'm sorry.
I might be stealing your thunder. I was just, were you going to talk about the link?
Yeah.